We'd like to welcome you to our December 8 council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, could we please stand together for our invocation? I'd like to thank Pastor David Knight from Christ Our Savior Fellowship for being with us tonight to lead us through invocation. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious Father in heaven, it is with a grateful heart that we approach your most holy throne where we can obtain mercy and seek your grace to help in our time of need. This evening, I ask that you would bestow your amazing grace on these council members and city officials as they discuss, deliberate, and decide issues that come before them during this council meeting. May you give them wisdom, direction, and guidance in conducting the affairs of our city. May whatever is done here tonight be pleasing and honoring to you. We thank you, and we ask these things in the holy and precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and it is in his name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Knight. Could you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
At this time, I believe we have some updates to our agenda. We'll recognize our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull, remove from the consent agenda, item E, Resolution 2022-311R.
Okay, we'll be pulling item E.
And under public hearings, we've received a request to continue public hearings four, five, and six to January 12.
Okay, we will deal with the continuance of items four, five, and six under public hearings when we get to them. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Anything else? At this time, we have a presentation by Osceola County regarding our transportation by Tony Alori, is that correct?
Yes.
And Steve Kane and Beth, it's good to have you here.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's great to be here again tonight. And with me, we have Osceola County Chief Administration Officer Beth Knight, and then Department Lead for Transportation and Transit is Steve Kane. So I was here in July. I can't believe it's been that long. This year has flown by to give you an update of our transportation program, and we're just here to give you a further update. I know you have two new members, so welcome. And so as our, this map shows you our transportation program and a lot of the roads that we have under planning, design, right-of-way, and soon to be under construction. And this is a really good map because it also shows in blue your JPA area, right? So a lot of these roads that we have under study or under design are actually in the JPA that we have with St. Cloud. To give you just a real quick highlight of where we are with a lot of these roads, Neptune will go under construction early next year. Parton Settlement, the same. You'll be happy to know Lake Shore Drive will open tomorrow. I know the audience is happy about that as well. And we've got also Simpson, Boggy, and Point Sienna going under construction early next year. We also have under planning studies now our Hickory Tree. Canoe Creek is under PDNE. We've also got Sunbridge Parkway, which will be a new road that will parallel Narcusi under PDNE. Nova Road widening is also under PDNE now, and we've got Jack Brack under design at this point. And Cyril's Road will also go under construction next year to two to four lanes. So we've got a lot going on in this area of the county. One of the reasons I wanted to sort of showcase Sunbridge Parkway because this is, was used for our later study that we're going to talk about on how to get roads constructed and the financial, how to do that. So in December of last year, 2021, we actually entered into a agreement with Tavistock for Sunbridge. And what we did was we analyzed all the traffic, 2040 traffic, of what would be on those roads and determined if they should be two-lane, four-lane, what was the proportionate share that would be paid for by the developer, what the county would pay for, and how they were going to be paid for. And we're actually forming an improvement district in this area to help finance the roads. So this was a sort of a good go-by for what we decided to do earlier this year. Now, this graphic shows the area that we're calling the Southeast Lake Toho Development. And much of this area is within the JPA, right? So obviously, the county and the city are going to have to work hand in hand to determine how these roads are going to be built, and who's going to pay for it, and when they're going to get built. So what the county did is they took what we use, the model we use for Sunbridge, and we embarked on this really massive transportation modeling exercise. And we looked at the 2045 traffic to see where is it coming from, what roads do we need to handle all of this growth, should the roads be two lanes or four lanes? And so we are in the midst of that. And you can see with this graphic, the results of that modeling. So this graphic, and I know it's hard to see, but as we move through in finalizing this study, which we're calling the SEETS, this shows the roads and what kind of laneage there needs to be. Now, I have really good news to tell you tonight, too. We've just gotten word that the Turnpike has moved up their PDNE for widening of their main line from KPR, Kissimmee Park Road, from 2026 to 2024. So that's to a tune of $4.2 million. And the reason they did that was because we started showing them this traffic modeling, and we started showing them all of the development that's coming through this area, and they went, oh, my goodness, what are we going to do? So they're moving up, and the DOT does not put things in their work program if they don't finance a PDNE unless they know they can then move into design right-of-way and construction, right? So the best thing to do is get them to realize we need to do a PDNE because that starts in their pipeline. So that is extremely good news, and we're very grateful to the partnership with the Turnpike that they did move that up. So we have just sort of finished this portion of our analysis for the SEETS of, okay, what roads do we need to help with all this growth? What do they need to be? Two lanes, four lanes, six lanes? What does it need to be? And so our next steps with the SEETS is that we are right now, and Steve is losing sleep at night, we're analyzing all the proportionate share, similar to what we did with the Sunbridge model, right? What developers are responsible for what? Our next steps are, we've also started meeting with your staff, and we're going to be meeting every two weeks to determine, based on the JPA and in accordance with Florida statutes, which roads would be county, which roads would be city. We're starting the conversation of mobility fees. Is it better to have one mobility fee? And so that as a developer comes in, whether you're in the city or the county, they pay one fee, right? So we're looking to see if that's feasible. We're also looking and working with your staff of getting together an inter-local agreement of, okay, if these roads are county and these roads are city, you know, we have all of that defined. So we have committed as staffs to meet every two weeks, and we've already, as county, put together what tasks need to be done and what the schedule and what they need to do. So we're sending that schedule out to staff this week as committed. We're also working on, with all of the developments we have, what roads need to be built and when in five-year increments. Okay? So based on information we got from the developers that have worked with us on the SEETS study, okay, we need to build KPR in years one through five, and we need to build, you know, Avenue M, five through 10. So we're working on all of that right now as well. Once we get all of that done, which will be in the first quarter of next year, we're going to have a public communication meeting because we know we have a lot of constituents coming to our board meeting saying, what are you doing about all this traffic with all of this development? What are you doing? Well, we're working on the plan now, and once we finalize it, working with your staff, we'll meet with the public. So we just wanted to give you an update tonight of that we're not sitting back saying, oh, my gosh, all this development is coming, what are we going to do? We're actively working on a plan, and we're working very closely with your staff. So with that, was quick, I know you have a lot of business, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the summary. It's always good to hear it because it's so complicated and complex and all the moving parts and pieces. And I personally like the idea of one mobility fee. Our former council member, who's no longer here, used to always call it the parade, and I feel like people kind of used us against each other and tried to get the best deal they could get and, you know, jumped around. So I think that kind of helps take that off the table. Do you happen to know the timing for the new interchange for the Turnpike?
Um, Steve? It's 2028.
Completed or?
Completed, yeah, great.
And I'll add that the Turnpike is doing what they can with the design-build for that project to incentivize alternative technical concepts to advance opening the Nolte Road Interchange sooner.
Okay.
That's great.
We don't have commitments on it, but that's what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Well, thank you. And Lake Shore is opening tomorrow?
Yes.
Exciting, exciting for all these folks here, and that's a great thing. When you talk about JPA, us common folks want to know just when everything's going to be done, but to explain JPA, Osceola County and St. Cloud, we work in conjunction to make it work. So just want to clarify that. JPA is agreement that we have with Osceola County and St. Cloud. The people I report to, the 63,000-plus people in St. Cloud, just want to know what's going on. So thank you for that update, and it's pretty exciting news, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you all for the update. I think it's pretty clear by everyone who lives and works in St. Cloud or in Osceola County that traffic has been a major issue, and I just want to commend staff from both city and county for working on that. My one question is, and I get this a lot from residents in the areas, are there any alternative Turnpike entrance exits that can be temporarily used, such as Friar's Cove or any other area that have been, I guess my question is, have these alternative sites been considered when we're considering the traffic that getting on and off the Turnpike?
Yeah, so if Steve wants to come up, too, I'm not sure if, so the Turnpike did give us an update on some improvements they're making to the KPR dual lifts, you know, onto Friar's Cove. For them to get a new interchange built, it's years and years and years. So the Nolte interchange is, they're, you know, moving and doing incentives, is what Steve was saying. And as part of this study, too, of their PDNE, there'll be additional interchanges with the Turnpike, probably two more south of the new Nolte, one at Southport Connector, and then one a little bit north of there. So as part of their PDNE, they're going to look at all of this development and see where additional, KPR and Shady Lane are just, there's just so much traffic you can see on the main line going, and so.
Understood, thank you.
And I think just to add to that is that the emergency entrance at Friar's Cove is meant for response time, so if we open that up to traditional access, you, you know, could sacrifice safety in that regard.
Understood, thanks.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Mr. Urban made me think about something. Years ago, I was in a meeting where they talked about doing, maybe it's just like an on-ramp from where we now have, I call it like the St. Cloud Loop, where the, what used to be there, the farmer's market or whatever, right by the Turnpike. Is there any conversation about that anymore? They were going to do like an entrance?
No.
Okay. That was just an idea they had years ago that they said there was going to be like an entrance over there?
Yeah. Haven't heard anything like that. But I, you know, and I don't want to, under, I know with the Turnpike of moving that PDNE up, that is just really big for this area, you know, just of where those new interchanges are and just to start getting it in their pipeline because they don't do projects to put it on the shelf. You know, they do projects to build projects, so. And we, they are widening the Turnpike, so as part of, that's part of our design projects for Neptune, Parton, and Simpson, they're actually shifting the main line over and softening some curves and stuff. So there is a lot of work that's being done in Osceola County in terms of the Turnpike and main line, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Fletcher.
I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, stopping by, giving us an update. I do appreciate the communications meeting with the residents. I think that's very important, and obviously working together between the two staffs to hopefully get something accomplished faster rather than later. So thank you.
Again, I also thank you, you know, traffic is certainly an issue that is on all of our minds as soon as we get out on the highways here. It is certainly good news to hear that the Turnpike is moving up the timeline on the development of that access there. Most of our residents have very little understanding of how complicated, how long it takes, how expensive it is, all the things that are involved in building roads is one of the most expensive things that government does. And so thank you for that update. It's certainly helpful to have that information here, and we look forward to seeing some improvements to help with the traffic challenges that we're all facing here. Thank you very much.
And not shutting down Lake Shore anymore, right? Here's to that. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have a presentation by the Economic Development Division regarding our St. Cloud seaplane base.
Good evening, Jantrin Forbes, Economic Development Manager. I believe at the last meeting when I gave the quarterly update, I mentioned that we were going to come back and give an update on the seaplane base, and I want to do that at this point. I wanted to just put the correlation between economic development and the seaplane that obviously it provides the opportunity for an economic boost in terms of growth and new jobs and new business opportunities. In fact, there was a report that was done, I think in 2014, that was the incubus for starting the seaplane base that showed that in the state of Florida, that seaplane bases, excuse me, that aviation creates over $144 billion in economic impact, and at this point, St. Cloud's not seeing any of that. And so we, the city contracted with Terry Lloyd, who is our seaplane coordinator, and he will provide an update of where we are to date.
Good evening all. Terry Lloyd, Aviation Coordinator for the City of St. Cloud. Currently, the seaplane base is licensed for operation by the State of Florida Department of Transportation. However, we don't currently have any shore facilities for anybody who wishes to land and access the city of St. Cloud. As an ongoing effort, we entered into and completed a feasibility study for inclusion in the Florida Aviation System Plan, which is under Florida DOT. And entering into that system plan allows us to access Florida DOT aviation grants in the future for infrastructure projects. It also puts us in consideration whenever any adjacent airports, such as Orlando International and Kissimmee, are doing their planning, they have to factor in their proximity to us, and that prevents anything happening that would, that would impact our ability to operate. As part of the Aviation System Plan, we're required to complete an initial airport master plan. That process is ongoing as well. That is a federal aviation administration format plan that is followed also by Florida DOT, and it basically follows the same format among all the airports so that when you look at a master plan for Kissimmee, St. Cloud, or Orlando, you're all looking at some of the same considerations. This was also necessary to enable us to access future grant funding. Just a quick diagram that actually shows the, it's called a seaplane lane or seaplane runway, if you will, in the southern quarter of East Lake Toho. Next steps in our process, we currently have a $550,000 FDOT grant available for construction. We're looking at designing what I have termed as a Phase 1 for shore facilities that would consist of floating docks and potentially fueling capacity. Everybody's dealing with inflation, so plans that were made in 2019 and 2020 are rapidly becoming overwhelmed by the rate of inflation. We're also working on marketing and advertising efforts to coincide with when we're going to have some shore facilities completed, and also coordinating an emergency response plan with various city departments so that we're prepared to handle any contingencies that might come up when the seaplane base gets into operation. This is showing the current lakefront marina, and the fishing pier on the left-hand side here is the area where we're looking at installing the floating docks and at some point, potentially a beach for seaplanes to come up onshore. Some issues to be determined in the future would be a concept for operations for when we're able to operate, and a potential exists for additional facilities, and these are both derived from some stakeholder meetings we've had with the seaplane community as well as part of the master planning process in coordination with the lakefront master plan. And part of that would be some seaplane facilities. Again, this is the potential strictly up to the discretion of staff and council to do a seaplane ramp on the west area where in the lakefront master plan, they're looking at moving the boat ramp operations, as well as the potential for some revenue-producing facilities in Chisholm Park. And again, these are just potential things that are being looked at so that everything that we can reasonably do is identified and mapped out, and decisions to actually implement those can be made at a later time. And this is just the, one of the exhibits from the lakefront master plan that shows the current marina area and the potential seaplane Phase 1 improvements on the left-hand side there on the fishing pier. To conclude, when the seaplane base is in operation, it is the only such facility in the urban core of Orlando. The other seaplane facilities, public use with potential fuel available, are located in Tavares, Florida, as well as down in Winter Haven. And this facility will also be able to take advantage of future trends in aviation, such as urban air mobility. And this is basically, what you see now is flying as drones are being upscaled potentially to carry passengers. Forty-year-plus career in aviation, I've always been a little skeptical of these kind of things, but we're starting to see just recently some major companies that are operating aircraft, conventional aircraft now, are starting to look at this boat of transportation. So if you're already in the aviation game, it gives you the ability to take advantage of trends in the future if that's what is desired. And with that, I'd love to take any of your questions.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So Terry, thank you so much for the update. And just for the new council, can you elaborate? I have a few questions, but, so they're allowed to land on any body of water, correct? Like seaplanes don't require any special permitting to land on the water? It's just what we, and maybe I'm not right, but what we created was an actually designated lane?
That's correct. There's a Florida statute that says that any body of water in the state of Florida, you can land and take off in a seaplane if it's suitable. There are some jurisdictions that have, for safety reasons, mainly have gone to the state and got permission to exclude some bodies of water, but it's an exemption-type thing as opposed to approving something. This seaplane lane basically puts it in the books with approaches to other airports so that people from outside the area can become familiar by looking at the charts before they actually head here. So it's a safety enhancement more than anything else.
And now, as far as like people using the lake, there's not anything that's going to be on the water indicating that this is the lane where the boats, where the planes can land? That's what?
No, there's no markers.
It's just like GPS coordinates for the pilots?
Yes, some very sophisticated seaplane facilities in places like the northeast or the northwest and Canada and Alaska, they do have some provisions for lights and stuff like that out there, but there's nothing in Florida that has any of those kind of infrastructure on the water.
And then the responsibility of, you know, who's in the lane is on the pilot, right? It's their job to make sure as they're approaching that it's a clear landing? It's not like I'm on a jet ski and I have to keep looking, make sure a plane's not going to land on me?
Yeah, that's, there's a theory in aviation that it's a big sky out there, and also when you boil that down to seaplanes, it's also a big lake out there. So, yeah, pilots are supposed to clear their landing approach, and we've actually got seaplanes operating out there now. You just don't notice it because they're landing and taking off and they're not coming into shore. And that's been happening way before this was ever discussed.
And so I was going to mention to my new council members, because when I got on council, the seaplane base was already kind of in conversation. So I made a field trip to Tavares, and so the city manager probably has the contact for them, and I went and did a tour and saw their boat ramp. You know, the plane ramps are different than boat ramps, and they have to have a different steepness to them, and it's just, it's just interesting to see what they've done in Tavares. But I wanted to ask you, and maybe you said it and I missed it, is there a timeline for this?
Currently, we are working through procurement to get a design started, and that's probably going to take the longest process is the design and permitting, because once you get down to actually doing that, it's same technology and materials used to make floating docks. So realistically, I'm looking perhaps by the end of 2023, maybe earlier.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, I know there's the master plan for the lakefront, and the big, the big missing gap is obviously, you know, like when you go to Tavares, they basically land in the downtown, right? So they get out of the plane and they're in the downtown. So our missing link is you got to get to the downtown. So is there any thoughts about using the Florida Avenue bike trail that we're in the middle of doing things to get like an interim connection? You know, you see all over in cities, they have the bikes and the scooters and the other things that people can hop on and maybe get downtown. Is there any kind of conversation about how people are going to get to the downtown area?
Yes. Short and sweet. Yes. We need to coordinate with multiple departments, but yes, you're exactly correct, using the Florida Avenue and that multi-use trail to connect from the lakefront to the downtown.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
Thank you. My, earlier in my days, my next-door neighbor had a plane, and just that's how he went to work, flew back and forth to Jacksonville. When we bring planes in here, I'm just looking at economical impact to the city. Is it going to be a drone-flight plane? Could it be a taxi service? Is it going to be people own it? And you look at Tavares as, as, as the council member mentioned, what's the economical impact in Tavares for these seaplanes versus the congestion of seaplanes? We have a beautiful lakefront, and I think seaplanes are perfect for that lakefront, and I believe my history reading is 1940, this was a seaplane lake, and it was developed as such. My, my thought process is what economical value is it going to be to the city of St. Cloud in bringing in business not only to the lakefront but to the city also? Is there a big plan that say, listen, we're a good destination, you can park your plane here? I mean, you look at now, we have drone planes flying for our defense mechanism without, without, without pilots with passengers. Is that something, I mean, I'm trying to look in the future, what benefit of St. Cloud it's going to be to have access and what our cost is versus what our benefit is? And I apologize, coming from the private sector, I always look at how much does it cost us and how much is it going to make us money? And that's why I just asked you, have there been some studies that said, listen, this is going to be great for the economical impact of St. Cloud, lakeshore, lakefront, plus the vendors that we have here in the city that are great, great vendors of, of St. Cloud? Is that our vision? I, I just want to think, you know, I, I get it, let's fly some planes in there. What percentage of people have planes? How, you know, they're going to come here, and once they get here, are we going to do tours? I mean, where are we going to make money from this endeavor?
So initially, the city did a very comprehensive study to determine the economic impact. It was through the city of Tavares. In fact, I think they provided us a report, I can provide that again to council, because it was even before my time, but we can provide that. But to answer your question, how does that provide an economic impact? During the master plan process, one of the key components is the stakeholder investment engagement, and so part of that is reaching out to existing pilots to find out what else besides just doing the, the fuel station and the dock, which you need to actually make this into a business development opportunity. So we also met with Tavares and talked about how they expanded from it just being the seaplane base to offering a training school, to offering tourism, which obviously creates, creates more jobs and more visibility. So yes, that is in our long-term plan.
That's what I wanted to see. We have some great folks that live on the lakeshore, we have some great folks that live in the State Street. If we're going to land and take off planes, there are, are some noise ordinances, and there are some things that are going to impact the city. But I'd like to say, in the future, what's the benefit versus the, the, the net? So, so thank you for that explanation. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to look back at that 1940 study and see that because, and I don't even know what percentage of people fly seaplanes, but it's pretty cool. I mean, I, I would like to, I just can't afford it, but to come here and visit and spend some money in their downtown areas is what I was looking at. So thank you for your explanation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lloyd, thank you very much for your presentation, and on to that always. Thank you very much. At this time, it brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person has requested this complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to, as soon as it's practical there after the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Betty Demke and Mr. Robert Bass.
No, there's two of us, you should give us some extra minutes. He pulled my shoe off, hold on. Merry Christmas. We saw each of you in the parade, and I hope you enjoyed it. You saw the crowds, what, this is one day that prayed that this city plus others come together, and if you watch the people's faces, not just the people in the parade like you, but those on the site, they're talking to people they don't know, everybody's happy. The atmosphere is electric. Again, thank you for being in it, but I didn't see any of the little lighted necklaces this year, Nathan? Oh, he can give me another extra U M S. But we will, Robert and I want to thank some of the behind-the-scenes staff that help us, and especially this year, because you're aware of the challenges we had. There was a point in our first meeting in August, we weren't even sure we were going to be able to have a parade. From 12th Street to filling potholes to trimming trees, and I could go on and on and on. You have a staff that is extraordinary. Be grateful for them and treat them well. When a challenge would arise, they were on it immediately, and the problem was resolved. Except for 12th Street, it took a little bit longer, but we got it done. We want to say a couple very special thank yous, because these are people that every year work so diligently and never get the recognition. They're our behind-the-scenes. JB Miller, he's up in the booth. Jay and his staff, they do the filming for the TV for those that can't be there to see it, and then they produce the video, which is available now, so go watch it. When you're in the parade, you don't really get to see the parade, so I urge you to go back and watch it. The pre-performance, everything, he, from beginning to end, Jay is extraordinary with his staff. Robert, you take up a four-minute, start right there.
No, I just want to echo on what, what Betty says. And we had 110 entries, probably had 1,000 people in the parade, probably had...
Two thousand.
Two thousand, okay. 10,000 probably lined along the streets conservatively. You know, when you hold a, when you hold an event like a car show or an art festival or something, it, it, a, a smaller venue, it's easy to put your volunteers around and, designate and delegate, but when you have, I have volunteers from Lakeshore in Missouri all the way to 12th in Florida, so we've, I've got a couple square miles that we have to cover. So you have to rely on faith and, and the good Lord and, and hope that all of my volunteers paid attention. But, but just really, we could not have done it without your staff. And, and Mark Garcia with our, with our barricades, I was calling him on the weekends, he did a phenomenal job. Wayne Souza with the police department, well, you're going to have...
Chief?
Yep, our, our police chief, they were, we, so for so many years, we were, we were kind of having to do, and I won't say on our own, but I think the last couple of years is when the police department stepped up and our transportation department stepped up, and we just can't thank them enough. Richard Tonks with the fire department, Captain Fugier, and I hope I pronounced your, pronounced your name correctly, Officer, what is it, Lynn?
Lynn.
Lynn, okay, Officer Lynn, and the team of officers. But Merry Christmas, thank all of you. Ken and Shaw, welcome to the, welcome to your elected positions, I wish you the best of luck, good luck doing everything. Anything else you need to add to this?
No, again, just take care of your staff because they are extraordinary, and this year, as we said, we faced some astronomical challenges, but they met them, and you should commend them for it.
I, I've got one question before we sit down. We have 12 months before the next parade. Will Pennsylvania be finished? You don't know how many, you know, I've seen subdivisions going up in two years' time from ground zero, and we got two blocks that we need to get fixed, so let's get it, let's get on the ball, get it finished. So I, I think next year, we'll be back on our regular route. Okay. And thank you Veronica for, for all that you're doing.
And we are certainly grateful for the amazing job that you guys did and, and all the staff. It was an incredible experience and the best I think we've had thus far. Thank you so much for your leadership. Mr. Urban, I think would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you two and thank all the, the city staff and, and everybody on your staff that made this possible. I was just blown away by the crowd this year. I, I think that the St. Cloud Christmas Parade is one of the best Christmas parades in all the state of Florida. It's really a hidden gem, and, and it, it's my favorite day of the year here in St. Cloud, so thank you all so much.
I'll thank all of you.
Thank you.
Toby, a few years ago, the Orlando Sentinel rated our parade as the best in all of central Florida.
I would agree.
Okay, thank you. Have a good holiday.
Debbie Brown. Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
Debbie Brown, 5300 Starline Drive, St. Cloud. I'm here to find out how residents of Starline Drive can get put on the agenda to come in front of you guys, the issues that we're having with Center Lake slash Taylor Morrison Homes slash doing something totally different than what we were told years ago. And I'm sure each one of you guys have gotten emails from one of my neighbors, I know she's emailed, her name is Robin, she lives on Starline Drive. I know when the copies that I get, I know every one of you guys, and I know someone told her that there's new members on the board up here. So we had Brad Hinkle come out from Taylor Morrison Homes, the land project manager. He told us our concerns, we were supposed to have a concrete block wall and a berm. Well, we're going to have a concrete slide-in wall. That's what he told us. And then he did confirm, there's no, because at my neighbor's, there's, um, I, there's another word, but I'm just going to say holes, like in the area, because she supposedly has wetlands or whatever. And then we were told, when I say we were told, I'm talking about 2018, if, if you follow the trail backwards to all the new ones, follow the trail back, you'll, you'll see, because I have videos, I have recordings of everything that was said, put on the record. It was not to be the slide-ins, it was to be a concrete block wall, and we were not to have two-story homes put up against our fence line 15 feet from our fence line. We were told by the Caruso family, by their representative, from the, whatever her name, she was a female, Pelosi or, if you look her up, you'll see, you'll see the company. And then the elevation they built up behind our property, now this is where the hurricanes even came about. Supposedly, they were building it up for the hurricanes. Well, there was never a hurricane in the, out there in the waters to come. Well, Hurricane Ian came, and we all know what that brought. It knocked down, the water coming from their property came into our property, you would not believe the sand that it pushed onto our property. And it knocked down that black silt fencing, as they call it, that was knocked over and the dirt just, and the water, yes, it rained, we had rained, but they could see how the water came from their area because of the trenches that it was in their part, on their property. But my point is, because I've been told by so many people, well, you got to contact the city manager's office. How do we get, how do we get it on the agenda for all of them to be here? To kind of get everything back in open?
Thank you. Ms. Miller, would you please give her some direction on how she can get in touch with you and how you can follow up on her concerns?
Well, our public works director has a meeting scheduled next week on site with Mrs. Robin.
Okay.
So they tried, like you mentioned, they did try to meet before Hurricane Ian, they also tried to meet after Hurricane Ian, so this is, they're, they're going to try again next week, so that is scheduled. I also know that there was some other communication with, between our planning department and her regarding the fact that DRC comments were going to be due in, in December, and I believe that is the section of the concrete wall, and, and they're nodding, so I am correct about that, so...
Yes, because I spoke to, what's her name?
Dag Marine.
Dag Marine. I came into the office on the 22nd, spoke to her to get the, see if we could get plans to kind of see what this looked like, and she told me, I don't think I started out on the right foot, that we were kind of maybe not on the same page here, but we ended up, you know, being there. She said it was, they've submitted it, but it's not under review. Okay, and then, because that same day, Brad Hinkle came out to our property and met, and he said, yeah, I can see the elevation out there. He said, no, that's not right. But now, in the meantime, he's supposed to be working on seeing if they can change it with the engineering company to do whatever they need to do to change the wall, make it a berm, higher berm, whatever, so, and kudos to him. I mean, he, I will say, even though he worked for Taylorston Morrison Homes, he's great, great person, because when I first mentioned, there's, I can't even open my windows, and I know three minutes is up.
Thank you, I need you to finish up, okay?
When I mentioned him, I cannot even open my windows, like on a nice day, because of the wind was blowing, the dirt was flying, and I gave him pictures showing. He said, has the water truck been out there? And I said, no. The next morning, water truck was out there.
Thank you, you'll have a meeting with the staff, and they'll be following up on your concerns.
Okay, and how will we, you'll contact me, or how will we, or the whole residence?
I'll make sure, I'll make sure you're invited to the meeting next week that they have scheduled with Robin.
Okay, well, Robin will let me know, because I live two doors over from it, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you may speak.
I want to thank, oh, my name is Victor Brown, I live, I own, my wife and I own the property at 5300 Starline Drive, all the way at the end. The east side of my property backs up to your new land, the park that you recently brought from George Hastings for 5.75 billion dollar, uh, million dollars. My concern is the 1,000 feet on my, as I said, I have five acres. My concern is the 1,000 feet on the...
Start the timer, please. Go ahead.
The 1,000 feet on the south side of my property where they went up five feet on the land elevation in 2018, it was agreed, where they were only going to put single-family homes along the 1,000 feet. Well, on the new plans that I've seen, it's a double-story homes, and there's 20 of them, and that, pardon me, that invades my privacy because I practice, I do a lot of nighttime prayer time, the first book of Corinthians, 14 chapter, second verse, where you, you know, you pray in tongues. The name of Jesus will be praised in the past at many more times in the future, and I, I get interpretations, but this is intrusive and extremely irritating to me, because if they build a 20 double-story homes along my south side of the property line and my neighbor's property line, which is equivalent to 1,000 feet, how am I going to look walking around at nighttime praying? They're going to say, who's this crazy guy talking? You know, I'm seeking God, trying to get a little closer relationship with Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit and stuff. Being said before, I don't know how much time I have left to live. So I think it prudent wise to get closer to God with what time I have. I cannot imagine 20 homes, double-story homes, and I'm walking along the fence line seeing all these people and complaining because I cut my grass at nighttime because the motor runs cooler. I feel that where, there was an agreement made that they're going to have the single-family home, so it's not intrusive to the 60 Starline residents in the enclave on Starline Drive. Like I said, I'm the last guy at Starline at, at the very end of the cul-de-sac, back and I have 700 feet next to your parked property that you bought from George Hastings. So if they, if, if Center Lake can do, change their, the plans, I should be able, I'll say this and I'll, I'll be done. If they're going to interfere with my prayer life at nighttime, which to me is like a sacrament of the bread and the wine, then I should be able to step back from the west side of my land to this east side, backing up to your property, go out and rent a big track hole with a long arms reach, step back from the fence line property 15 feet, and dig a deep canal and raise up ground level 90 feet so that I can maintain my prayer time, because that to me is more valuable than anything I owned. So they should not be able to put double-story houses... So they should not be able to put double-story houses, 20 of them, a thousand feet on the south side of Starline Drive.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. Make sure you go to that meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you very much again for not letting Jimmy Caruso put that $5 million down.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Christine Lattes-Drake.
Good evening, everyone, happy holidays, good to see new faces up there. So several people and I have spoken about different lawsuits that have been filed against the city. And after doing some research, I discovered that since 2019, we've had 25 lawsuits that have been filed. And of those, approximately 18 are still open. After watching the meeting for the past three years, the city council meeting, with the exception of the waste management lawsuit, there's been no mention of these lawsuits, nor has there been any executive sessions for the council to address these cases. I've noticed that they go straight to our insurance, and with that, it's caused an increase in our premium. From October of 2017 to 2019, our annual premium was $970,359. In October of 2019 to 2021, our premium has increased to $1,145,197. That's an annual increase, I'm sorry, not an annual, that is a biannual for the contract increase of approximately $350,000. That's a lot of money. So my purpose tonight for being here in front of you and speaking to each of you is to say that there's three new council members, one fairly new, two very new. And I'm hoping that you guys will look into and start asking some questions about why our premiums are increasing so drastically. And, and I'm wondering if there's a way to handle it before it gets to the insurance company, which ends up compounding attorney fees. So, because that's a considerable amount of money, gentlemen and ladies, so.
Thank you, thank you for sharing your concern.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the council during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, I think the city manager has some comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item C, Resolution 2022-303R, is a resolution regarding our facility rental fee reduction waiver policy. And I would like to make four revisions to that. On page two, under ineligible events and activities, I'd like to revise so that organizations outside St. Cloud, unless city residents, receive services that can be documented. On page two, under ineligible events and activities, I'd like to add actual city costs under fees that cannot be waived or reduced. So, so costs such as staffing, custodial, solid waste. On page three, under funding considerations, I'd like to revise the responsibility for promotional opportunity approval to the city manager or designee. It's currently written to be a title of a position that does not exist within the city. And on page three, under fee reduction waiver criteria, I'd like to add governmental entities as eligible to receive fee reductions also. Also, I would like to request item H, the 2023 proposed conceptual calendar. Today, at the Osceola Legislative Luncheon, they discussed that Olay will be making a trip to Tallahassee on January 25th and returning on the 26th. We do have a city council meeting on January 26th. I have checked our agenda prep and also with our planning department, and at this point, it should not cause serious case delays. There's only one case currently scheduled, so I'd like to recommend that we cancel the January 26th meeting. If the city council agrees with my recommendations, I request that you approve the consent agenda with changes as proposed by staff.
Are there any objections from the council to any of these changes that have been proposed by the city manager? And I hear no objections. Are there any of the items on the cons, on the consent agenda that any of the council members are wishing to address? If not, would anyone in the audience like to speak to anything on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion that we adopt the consent agenda with the changes that have been proposed by the city manager? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion with the changes to approve the consent agenda with the changes that the city manager has brought up.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban, second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are public hearings. Madam Clerk, you please read items one, two, and three.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-13, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 1,556.35 acres identified as Edgewater, located west of the Florida Turnpike and north and south of Kissimmee Park Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately 1,556.35 acres identified as Edgewater ED-4, located west of the Florida Turnpike and north and south of Kissimmee Park Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect severability, copied and filed and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-15, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of mix, mixed use compatibility with a mixed use future land use designation change adopted by ordinance 2022-14 for approximately 1,556.35 acres identified as Edgewater, located west of the Florida Turnpike and north and south of Kissimmee Park Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Mayor, council members, and I'm Dave Tomac with the city manager's office. These first three items on the agenda all, all are about the same property. We're talking about what is known as Edgewater, it's approximately 1,500 acres, as you can see on the map, adjacent to the Turnpike and then to the city on the north. The first action would be to annex the property. The second action is on the land use, if the annexation is successful. And then the third would be to rezone the property. The, the annexation piece, it is consistent with the requirements of Florida state statutes and consistent with the joint planning area agreement the city has with Osceola County. The staffs from both jurisdictions have been working hard on this area, I'm thinking 18-plus years, according to the city attorney. My memory doesn't go back that far, even if it did happen, but I, but I do go back.
My memory doesn't go back, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I do, I do, I do remember back to 2008, and it was a very active participation with a group of developers in that area. There was a major study undergone by the Urban Land Institute that the county requested come down and look at this and see how that can benefit the future of the, the region and the county. The city and county started working together as far back as 2014. Actually, it was earlier than that, it took about four years to actually get the joint planning agreement in place. So a lot of effort has been done, and I'll go through that in more detail in a little bit. The, the developers of what they called DRIs back then, developments of regional impact, worked together from, all the way from where Neptune Road and the, and the Turnpike entrance is, what's now known as Kindred. I was happy to see that Edgewater hadn't really changed its name, so I remembered it. The other developments have kind of changed their names, but you've seen Kindred, Edgewater, now we're, or Tohoku, now we're talking about Edgewater, and it continues down the line all the way to Southport. The folks all got together, we even did Rightofway acquisition for the major framework street that is a major parallel road to Canoe Creek, called Cross Prairie Parkway now. So all that stuff's been put into place. So for the annexation, this is kind of one of the last pieces of that whole puzzle. The city and county agreed to do a, what we call a mixed-use land use designation. Basically, those are principles and, and code requirements that establish a tighter grid, more walkable communities with services and schools and parks, police, fire, and all the other activities that folks need for services, employment opportunities within walking distance or shorter trip lengths. The densities are higher to allow for more services to be rendered to the folks in shorter distances. The concepts were all vetted out over a long period of time, and so this development actually is holding true to those principles. The mixed-use district was pretty much agreed to by both the city and county, so the recommendation for a future land use designation of mixed use is, is not really a difficult one. You've got an entire element in the comprehensive plan that goes over this particular mixed-use district, the east of Lake Toho. The zoning, because of that, the zoning is mixed use, because of, that's what implements the policies and, and principles that are associated with the land use district. And, and again, cities have been working with the county, make sure that we've got a cohesive, coordinated approach to this, and the development is consistent with this. So in, in the more detail on the background, the joint planning agreement back in 2014, like I said, I think we started that in 2010, working with all the staffs of both jurisdictions, working with the community to come up with an area and, and service policies and direction to actually provide for, for services for this area, we call now the joint planning area, or JPA. In the city, we, we did a economic and fiscal report from Raptellis back in 2021. The purpose of that was to enter, to decide whether we should enter into this water and wastewater service annexation and development agreement for this property called Edgewater. The city council did approve that in 2021. The developers have been working feverishly to comply with that agreement, as has city staff, and, and we've got an incredible cooperation from the county. By the way, because of COVID, there could have been a lot of delays, the county's actually processed the things and made sure that we didn't like miss a step in getting to this point. At a workshop this past summer, which is kind of my first meeting with y'all, we, we had an updated analysis by Metro Forecasting to confirm fiscal impacts, to confirm the growth curve and the impacts to the city, and this area was considered the top-ranked area. So it's a positive impact upon the city. Finally, the county gave its presentation on the seat study to talk about transportation. We've got an updated economic forecast, which is in much more detail for Metro Forecasting. We're actually looking at additional staffing, additional like purchases for parks, et cetera, weighed against the actual revenues, to make sure our revenues are still in line with what we need to do to make this a positive future for, for the city and for our citizens. So in the background for this, for this item, there is a list of approved and pending development orders and permits for this project. It's 1,500 acres, so there's a lot, and like I said, the county's been very cooperative. Any projects that have, and permits that have been approved by the county, we obviously follow. And we've already talked about how we jointly participated in the policies and the comprehensive plan and the standards. So if there was a preliminary subdivision plan approved in the county, and a subsequent site development permit is processed in the city, we follow that approved preliminary subdivision plan. So everything's transparent. If the developer for any particular neighborhood has already gotten their site permits approved with site construction plans and paid the inspection fees to the county, and they're under construction right now, we allow the county to continue those inspections until a certificate of completion, at which time then they, they send us the certificate of completion and all the files, which they've done on almost like every annexation. Everything's digital, they just transfer them over to us, so that that way, we've got all the history, we've got all the approvals, and we can keep things moving effortlessly. The other thing this does is the developers don't have to pay two fees, one to the county, and then halfway through have to now pay the city. It all gets done consistently, and then we pick it up after, after that certificate of completion. There's also model homes that have been approved through the county that was consistent with our annexation agreement. Those, those model homes will be built and inspected by, by, in the county, by the county. And then again, they get a certificate of completion for that, they turn it over to us and transfer those fees. So that kind of makes sure that anything that's active, that's already gone through that and actually paid their fees, that they're allowed to continue all the way till, till the end of that. Pending, there's, there's a list of pending approvals and, and applications. I talked, I talked to the deputy county manager today, they're gonna kind of get an inventory. So with the annexation successful today, anything, anything that was approved as of today, we just talked through that, what we do with those, anything that's not been approved through today and is pending, we're gonna get a list of those from the county. There's already a list that's been provided in this application. We'll kind of go through it with the county to, to make sure we've, you know, if, if they paid a fee for a phase-two masquerading but never started it, or actually won't start it for a couple of years, we'll go ahead and work with the county to transfer the fees over to the city. We'll go ahead and issue the permit and have the developer pay whatever the difference is, but we won't be double-charging. The, once we get that list together and work through it all, then we'll get through, we'll work with each of the builders. I will say, to date, everybody's been acting in good faith, and during the transition period, we can, we intend fully to continue to act in good faith and make sure that this transition's smooth. So, so the wheels are kind of in motion, and there's a lot of, a lot of people doing a lot of things, but I think we've got it in place, the relationship with the county, working with, with the different property owners and developers to make sure that, that that part's smooth. So, so all of that's been worked out, and we look forward to continuing with that. Talk a little bit about the positive things from the development. This particular development, as I said, has all the, the principles to provide for a, a nice cohesive grid to, pedestrian-friendly, but there's about 1.9 million square feet of, of commercial and, and employment uses proposed for this area, which will be a key. It's close to the Nolte interchange with the roadway network that's planned for this area. It'll provide access not just to the new residents, but the existing residents in that. but the existing residents in that area, as well as the folks in the existing city limits, because the grid will have east-west connector roads, as well as the parallel north-south roads. So, it should be easily accessible. There is a new crop of residential coming in as well to support, you know, the employment and services as well. This is just to show you, only because I know you may think my memory's bad, being old. Analysis Area One, it talks about the total revenue from the Metro Forecasting study. It talks about the new values coming from the different land use types, and it talks about the fiscal benefit to the city, all being positive. We'll be able to balance our land uses a lot better. We'll get more efficient on services, and we'll actually have the revenues to support that. Working with the county to make sure the services are cohesive and coordinated, so there's not overlap. We fully expect to have a successful future with this annexation. I think I'm done with the annexation. I've already talked a little bit about the land use and the zoning. The land use has already been pretty much agreed upon in our comprehensive plan that it's mixed-use. It's a no-brainer to recommend that to you, so it is consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the surrounding area, because the whole area has been designed with a conceptual master plan. So, what they're doing fits in with the overall master plan design. We see no adverse impacts on city facilities. We've already talked about the revenues to correspond with the needed services. With respect to the densities, residential is five to 25 dwelling units per acre. Non-residential is anywhere from 0.35 to 2.5 for a floor area ratio. My guess is usually when these kinds of things start, they're at a lower floor area ratio, and they build them so that they can grow over time, you know. So, you know, after 10, 20 years, when you start seeing the parking garages going in and some of the bigger square footages, there's room to grow. The mixed-use is the same in both the city and the county. Those were both coordinated many years ago. Meet your strategic plan goals. Staff has recommended approval. Planning Commission did meet on this and recommended approval in July. This council did approve the initial hearing, and the requested action today is approval of all three, ordinance 202213, 2214, and 2215. And if I haven't bored you by now, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Technically, this is an annexation pursuant to an agreement, so technically, the city is the applicant on this one.
We'll receive public comment at this point. Vivian Monaco and Watson Sloan. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Monica with the law firm of Watson Sloan, 100 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Suite 1,003,2801, at least for the next week and a half. We're moving. So, I represent Meritage Homes, and recently, they asked me to take a look at some of these, some of the documents, and my client has some concerns, just because there seems to be gray area on some of the things. Mr. Tomek addressed some of those, addressed some of those situations, but we don't have it in writing. So, there's a concern about, you know, double, like pending plaits in the county coming to the city for review and approval. Well, then you have to change the whole plaque. You have to rename it, redo it. So, there are those types of things that I think we could probably address in writing, but this evening, Meritage has asked me to request a continuance of these three public hearings to give us a chance to work some of these things out, and that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Mazzaras?
Vivian, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you, Dan?
So, can you just clarify? So, Meritage is a contract purchaser of some of the...
They actually own some of the property that is being annexed.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have any counsel or wisdom for us?
Well, this, as I said, the city is the applicant under this annexation piece because of an annexation agreement that was executed back in 2021. Mr. Tomek referred to it. This property is, was intended to be annexed. There are these issues that Ms. Monaco has presented, that she called gray issues. We believe, from a staff perspective, that they can easily be worked through. The city has done this before with properties that have been annexed and sort of mid-review, and with, including is going down to the detail of who's doing the inspections and who's getting paid for it. So, we have worked well with the county on those issues. So, the way this is presented, the city agreed, and the property owner of all the property in the beginning agreed that this property would be annexed into the city, which is why the city is the applicant now. It's ready to be annexed. It meets the statutory requirements of the annexation. City staff would like the property, get annexed, so we can move forward with it. So, we don't think there's any reason to delay the annexation tonight, or the comp plan, or the zoning. We would, and as Mr. Tomek and I talked about this earlier, we'd obviously would be willing to talk, to sit down with all the property owners involved with this and work through these things, but the city is committed to following whatever approvals have been made in the county with regard to this project, and as Mr. Tomek pointed out, we'd work with the county to make sure that those approvals are transferred over to this property. So, again, we don't, I don't think staff would agree to continue us at this point. We'd like to get the property annexed so we can move forward.
So, you feel like all the concerns that she's addressing here can be...
They're not, I agree, Ms. Monaco. They're not specifically in writing. I don't think that they're required to be in writing to complete the annexation on this, but we certainly could be, would be willing to get, sit down with them and, you know, and put those in place, but we think the annexation meets the requirements of the law, and it's, there isn't any reason to hold off on it at this point.
Okay. Do you have any other comment?
The only thing I would comment is that I've been in conversations with my client, and at this point, so like maybe 20 minutes ago, they're still very uncomfortable without these things being in writing. I think we can get there, but right now, it's just not in writing, and, you know, things happen.
Thank you. And I just, and one final, so just to clarify, so her client, Ms. Monaco's client, basically acquired the property from the individuals that assigned the annexation agreement. So, essentially, this is being processed as a voluntary annexation. That obligation that the prior owner did, basically, they take on that obligation. So, they have essentially agreed to this annexation. That's why it's being processed as a voluntary annexation today, and they took the property subject to that agreement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Frady, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. Would anyone else like to comment?
Good evening. Joe Thacker, 17 South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I also represent two builders who have purchased property within the Edgewater property. We have the same concerns that Ms. Monaco also put on the record. We have been in contact with staff. I do appreciate all that Mr. Tomek put on the record. That did address a lot of the concerns. Please note, we do not object to the annexation. We are fully in support of the annexation, understand the obligations under the annexation agreement. What we're looking for is a clear path of how these approvals and pending approvals get transferred from the county to the city, how fees that have already been paid get transferred from the county to the city. You know, the model homes, they've already paid mobility fee and school impact fee credits. They want to make sure that the city recognizes that. Somehow, the county gives those to the city, but we don't know how that will happen. And so, that's the only reason we're here tonight, is to say, you know, we just don't want any confusion. We want a game plan, and we want to work with both the county and the city. I have full faith in the staff at the city. I work with them all the time. You can't ask for a better staff. But what the developers, the builders want to know is how and why, because, you know, they have timelines, they have obligations themselves. So, that's the only reason that we're here tonight to have any kind of discussion, is just to say, you know, we'd rather know in writing, because we don't, we don't know if the county actually is going to agree with everything that the city wants them to. So, we'd like to have an interlocal agreement between the county and the city, or if we don't want to go that far, an email exchange that sets out everything, that shows what will be agreed upon. And so, you know, these builders are going to be in the city. They're going to work with the city staff for many, many years, because this is such a large project. So, we just want to start off on the right foot.
So, are you recommending a continuance also?
We are asking that there be some kind of agreement in place at the time the annexation goes through.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzaras?
And again, I understand their position, and not to really play complete devil's advocate, but given the current state of this petition and what has already been agreed to by the owner of the property, which Mrs. Thacker and Ms. Monaco's clients took subject to, the city could essentially say, we're going to enter into an agreement that says you have to start over from the very beginning, and we would still be able to annex the property. The city has no intention of doing that, so continuing it to work on an agreement as it relates to the annexation, in our view, it's not necessary, nor is it appropriate. We're happy to work through, happy to write it all, deal with all these issues. I think Mr. Tomek has been working very diligent the last two days to work and try to get it, to try to put it all together, these issues that just, most of these that just recently came up. So, but the annexation is going to, should go through either way if the council wants to annex the property. Mr. Tomek gave you a large presentation about how important it is for this parcel to be annexed and be part of the city, and at least in staff's recommendation. So, again, we think the annexation can go through. All these other issues can be worked out.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that this isn't the first property the city's ever annexed, and it's not the first one we've had to coordinate with the county on making a smooth transition. So, I've already had conversations, but also, we've been working with these folks for more than a couple of days. We've met with them. We've talked about different issues. We tried to make it as smooth as possible. Some of these issues that just came up the last day or two, I fully intend to talk to the county, get a plan worked out, work with the different builders to make sure that we treat them like a customer. So, we have no intention of not continuing to work in good faith. We've, in principle, with the county, we've agreed, we don't want to double charge for that. So, we've talked about, you know, how far the county was willing to go. They don't want to do some long-term inspections for us. We don't want them to do that. We've got staff that can do inspections. Or we can hire contractors to do that. So, we fully intend to meet our end of the bargain. The county has expressed that they're willing to continue with the stuff that they've already been paid for, that they can finish the inspections on, and then those future things, the pending things, that's what we got to work out. We'll immediately sit down with them. We'll immediately sit down with the builders, and I'm sure we can work out that process to the, you know, satisfaction of our customers, because they'll be our customers for a long time. They're not going to build out tomorrow.
Tina Demastin.
Hey there. My name is Tina Demastin. I represent MI Homes, 400 International Parkway, 470 Lake Mary, Florida. I first want to say, we do not object to the annexation. We're just a little concerned because, well, I'm going to say first of all, that Dave Tomek, Melissa, Bob Deathridge, we have been working for the last couple of months, and we've had meetings to discuss how the transition was going to occur. In all the meetings, and even including the original interlocal or annexation agreement, it set forth that any of the applications that were already in process would continue in the county until they were ultimately approved, inspected, and so forth. What we found out today is that there are several items, the ones that Dave so eloquently mentioned, that are pending. And now we're hearing, and we just literally heard this today, that some of those now are going to have to transition. Well, we have plans and permits and things, and now we're going to have to kind of start over? So, that's where, you know, our concern is that we want to make sure that that transition continues. And I can say, without a doubt, that Dave, Melissa, Bob, everybody has already put, you know, the best foot forward to anticipate that. We just kind of didn't expect that the county was going to say, hey, wait a minute. We're not necessarily comfortable doing this right now. We're going to, you know, pause on it. And we actually have model homes that are in for permitting, and we're told that, and we were actually expecting approvals, and they're not coming out. And we know that part of it is because of this annexation. So, we're kind of like, okay, well, we're going to have to resubmit every, like, anyway, there's just, you know, there's just some concerns about that transition, and it's much more about the pending projects. Dave has assured us that, you know, the architecture that we planned all these subdivisions for, you know, the annexation agreement has six or seven items that are going to be required in addition to that, and that's in the agreement, and we're fully intending on complying with those. But like, that the architecture that we've already planned that fit on these lots that, you know, we're building models for, is going to be accepted as it was accepted in the county. We're not going to have to go through a full new architectural review, start from scratch, and things like that, but it's the pending things that we're just concerned about, and that's why we were asking, and, you know, we've had Ms. Thacker representing us to, you know, try to figure out some of this transition, and I can say that staff has worked in good faith, and, you know, up to the last minute, trying to figure out these things, but it does make us nervous not knowing, you know. And with the inspection fees being transferred, the city has more expensive inspection fees. So, they're going to transfer it, and then we have to now pay the difference. Again, our budgets were set on these properties when we purchased them. We actually own the land, and our budgets were set based on the fees that were paid. Now, we're going to have to come up and, you know, go back to corporate and say, oh, yeah, we just blew our budget. You know, and those kind of things weren't anticipated, because the agreement itself anticipated that those reviews would continue in the county. And, you know, we can't blame the county for saying, hey, timeout, wait a minute. You know, we're not, we're not ready to continue something that's not in our jurisdiction. And that's just why we're asking for a pause, just to make sure that we really do have our ducks in a row. And I'm hoping that you will continue to port your planning staff. I know they're working hard, and amazingly, I get emails when I'm working late. I get responses late, late, late at night, so I know that they need assistance and help and more staff. So, please continue to fund them, because I know with MI alone, we're bringing in over 600 units into the city in the next, you know, coming years. And, you know, we want to continue this relationship and make sure our projects flow, and we're able to build our houses, and work with your fabulous staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to these items? If not, we'll have a discussion by council. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff for answering all my questions this week. I really appreciate it. It was very helpful. This was going to go in a little bit different direction. I was just going to ask you to go over impact fees and the roadway network and all of that stuff, but in light of the comments, I believe we have an opportunity to bring this property into our control, and I think we should do so. They knew that they were going to be annexed at one point, and I think we should go ahead and move forward and let staff work out those kinks. And once we have control, it's our architectural drawings, it's our permit fees, it's everything that we request. Any revisions come before us, and I think we have an opportunity to do that. I think we should do so.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We're talking about transportation and things such as that. I know existing facilities and homes, we can't go to the builders to do that, but looking at the plan and all the education that's been taught 18 years into coming of what's going on right now, we, it looks to me as we're going to alleviate traffic through different avenues and revenues that way. Impact fees and annexation, I agree with Councilman Fletcher, we, St. Cloud, need this annexation, because it's going to be under our control for fire, safety, police, water, electrical, all that. My question is that, why shouldn't we do that? Because we're going to provide those services regardless, and it's going to come out of our coffers, and I'm just for the city of St. Cloud. I love Osceola County. I agree with that. But we're going to be paying for these services anyway, so why shouldn't it be annexed? And can you give me a negative of why shouldn't St. Cloud annex this, even though if it's not annexed, we're still going to provide those services, health and safety, which is a concern to me and all the citizens of St. Cloud?
I'm hoping that was a rhetorical question, because I'm not the one that's going to do that for you, Councilman. I just agree that it's, we still recommend approval.
Right.
And we will go out of our way to make sure that it's a smooth transition, and that we will make sure that if they have deadlines, we'll meet them.
Right. You're not rookies in this. You're veterans. You've done this. This isn't the first thing we annex, and this isn't the first thing we've done. This is what we do.
And these are all good builders.
At times, we have to trust our city employees and our management to look out for the best interest of St. Cloud, and I believe we are with St. Cloud. And I was just looking at, all right, we may ease, we may ease traffic, we may ease that, we are definitely going to have to provide those services, which my main concern is the health and safety of our citizens. So I guess my question is to you, and I know it's rhetorical, why not?
I wouldn't be here if I knew why not.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, I definitely agree with what Councilmembers Fletcher and Gilbert just said. To me, when you first look at this, it's staggering to see the amount of growth that's coming, but I think it's important to recognize that this is coming whether we annex this or not, and all of these people are going to be using our city resources, roads, public safety, parks. And so, in reading the fiscal impact analysis and the studies by Metro Forecasting, I don't think the city can afford not to do this. And this is something that we have to protect, what is in the best interest of the city of St. Cloud and of our residents. And so I think that this is an important step forward for our city.
Well, I can certainly understand the developers' concerns that are here. It's the same concerns that our residents have. You know, they don't want to have to double pay, and when they've already invested thousands of dollars in plans and approvals and so on, and fees they shouldn't have to double. Feel like they're having to worry about being double-dipped on. And I'm, from what you've said, I feel like you've made the assurance that that's not going to happen, that we're going to do everything that we can to work with what they've already done, and to work with the county in moving forward with this. And I think that's our intention, is it not? Is there any other wording that we need to add to this, that has already been said in this meeting?
We don't think so. Generally speaking, there's a concept in the law known as entitlements. They have entitlements in proven the county. The city has never acted to divest any property that's annexed into the city. I shouldn't say never, never, since I've been city attorney, we've never acted to divest any property owner that has entitlements of those entitlements upon annexation, and we wouldn't do that. And we certainly, we wouldn't recommend the city council do that. So they will carry forward whatever entitlements they had. As Dave Tomic pointed out, the beauty of the zoning piece, it's a similar mixed-use zoning, which is what, how the project was reviewed and essentially designed in the county, so it's similar in the city. To the extent that there are any inconsistencies in it, we will already, we already know about those, and staff's already willing to accept those.
And to just add to that, if like, there's a discrepancy between the two codes that is brought to our attention, we'll work through it, and if we have to come back to you all to modify a code down the road, or whatever, to make it a good quality project while still moving it forward, we'll definitely do that.
Well, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the first item, Item Ordinance Number 2022-13, with the caveat that you added, you're going to work with the applicants in an equitable way to resolve these concerns that they have. Do I have a second for the adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-13?
I'll second that.
I have a motion for the mayor, a second from Councilman Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Could I have a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-14?
Motion to approve. Ordinance Number 2022-14.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Could I have a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 22-15? The mayor makes a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-15. Could I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Madam Clerk, would you please read Items Four, Five, and Six into the record.
Final public hearing for Ordinance Number 2022-58, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 101.97 acres, identified as lakeside at Satilla, located south of Haywood-Ruffin Road, east of Narcusi Road, and north of Lilian Lee Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for Ordinance Number 2022-59, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigned a future land use designation, LDR, low-density residential, to approximately 101.97 acres, identified as lakeside at Satilla, located south of Haywood-Ruffin, east of Narcusi Road, and north of Lilian Lee, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. Final public hearing for Ordinance Number 2022-60, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD, Planned Unit Development, compatible with the low-density residential, future land use designation change adopted by Ordinance Number 2022-59, for approximately 101.97 acres, identified as lakeside at Satilla, located south of Haywood-Ruffin, east of Narcusi Road, and north of Lilian Lee, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for approval of the preliminary master plan, filing of the planning commission recommendation, and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzaros.
I'm going to defer to Ms. Duncan.
Yep, sorry. Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. The applicant has requested to move these items to a date certain of January 12, 2023.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion that we move Item Number Four, Ordinance Number 2022-58, continue that to January 12?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Could I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-59?
Continued till January 12?
January 12.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And could we have a motion for the continuation of Item Number 2022-60 to January 12 also?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, would you please read Item Number Seven?
Resolution Number 2022-295R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a paro-
Parochial.
Parochial school, thank you, identified as St. Cloud Christian Preparatory School, located at 2500 Canoe Creek Road, St. Cloud, Florida, as described in the body of the resolution.
Melissa?
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Community Development Director. The request before you tonight is for a conditional use for the St. Cloud Christian Prep School. Back in September of 2020, City Council approved the conditional use with a specific condition that the entrance should be a right-in and right-out only for traffic to flow. Subsequent to that approval, the applicant applied for, and staff approved a site development A request to modify the site development plan came in because the county reviewed the TIA for Canoe Creek Road, and that TIA necessitated a left-turn lane. This request is to modify that same conditional use and remove the condition that the entrance should be right-in, right-out only. Excuse me. At the City Council meeting on November 17, the City Council requested that staff get with the county to confirm that that was a requirement, and confirm that it was a safety issue to include the left-turn lane. So we did that, we reached out to the county, and they did provide to us in writing that they do stand by their recommend, or their requirement for the left-turn lane. This is a graphic representation of the currently approved site development plan, and here's a graphic representation of what the applicant has requested. This request meets the strategic plan goals for growth management and economic development. Staff recommends approval, and likewise, we request that City Council approve Resolution 2022-295R with the following conditions. The conditions before you right now are the conditions that will be carried over, that the loop road shall wrap around the parking through Phase One and Two, that they will be able to stack 84 cars on site, and meet these certain setback and buffer requirements. The request is to change that last condition regarding the right-in and right-out only to allow for that left-hand turn lane that the county is requiring, and change that condition to have this conditional use come back in a year, and if there are any issues to traffic, any stacking in the right-of-way, or anything that interferes with the flow of traffic before that year, that it could be brought back as well. So with that, I end my presentation, and I offer myself for any questions, and the applicants are also here for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to the side? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Brian Forster, 100 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 3281. We just wanted to say that we appreciate the work that city and county staff have put into this. They've done a lot of work since the last council meeting to try to give background to how we got to this point. As she stated, we were required to do a traffic study. That traffic study showed that a left-turn lane would be required, and due to the offset of the existing intersection, a highway that forced us to move the driveway further north. So we're here to answer any questions. I think the transportation manager's been a big help, and I think she is available to answer any questions that the county may have provided her, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll receive public comment at this time. James Moore, are you wishing to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
James Moore, 3855 San Siro Circle, St. Cloud, Florida, 34772. I'd just like to take the time to come in for you and just ask, I mean, the kids were kind of promised to be, schools would be open beginning this school year. The kids have been pushed back, they've been having to be transported across town, across city. They're not getting their full school year. My son is autistic, he can't travel on buses, he's staying at home, going through depression. We just really need the kids to get going back to school. Just here to, you know, ask that you guys take it into consideration, and get school open, get the kids back going, and stay at home for that, helping for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to the side? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll need to please fill out a form when you finish.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I'm Dr. Bola Al-Falabi, one of the parents of the kids at St. Cloud Prep School. My address is 10119 Malpass Point, Orlando, Florida. Here to speak to the great job the school owners are doing. They are very experienced school administrators that have several branches across central Florida. The, I'm here also to plead with you to approve the conditional use because of the-
You need to fill out that when you finish, sir.
Oh, sure. Because of the inconvenience and the safety issues, which, as the fact that they couldn't hold the school at this new location in Canoe Creek, they have to transport kids about 45 minutes to an hour with traffic in school buses, three school buses, from their annexed location to, from, you know, from the pickup location to the annexed location in Kissimmee. And so, we need to look at the fact that this is, there are more risk than benefit. We need to look at the benefits for the conditional use as opposed to look at the risk, and that's why I'm here to support and to plead that, like, I think the attorney said that, you know, there's still, we can always have a monitoring period where you can see if this can be a hazard to the community, especially the fact that they had expert transportation studies that were done, and from my understanding, the county also approved it before some new issues occurred with the city. So that's all I have to say.
Councilmember, would anyone else like to speak to the side from the public? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I just wanted to address a few of the comments. So when this site came into the city and they wanted to do the conditional use in this location, I was opposed, excuse me, I was opposed to the location, not the school. You know, I'm worried about the traffic. We spent a lot of time discussing it, we went back and forth, we talked about all these conditions that we wanted to put onto the site, because we were worried, frankly, about the location. You know, it's a busy road. When you put a school on a busy road, it just gets busier. Parents do crazy things. I know the school is saying their parents don't do crazy things, but we see it at all the schools. So, you know, we put these conditional use conditions on there, and then I guess the city was trying to be, from my understanding, business-friendly, gave them, allowed them to start moving forward, but the developer and the engineer never went and got the approvals from the county. So then now, it came back at the end, and they're wanting to change the conditions that the city put on it. So really, put the city in a bad position, in my opinion, because now the building is built, everybody's ready for the school to open, the conditions that the city wanted, now we can't have, because we didn't do things in the proper order, and now you're coming back and wanting to change it. So that's, that's my frustration. It's not the school, I'm sure it's a wonderful school, it's, the location for me was always a challenge. You know, frankly, I feel like we've been put in this position now, what do we do? I mean, I think the condition that the city manager put on there is probably the best thing we're going to get out of it, but frankly, it was mistakes that were made early on, because if the county had come and said they wanted the conditions that they had now, and the ground hadn't been broken, the school would probably be in a different location. I mean, that's just kind of the truth about it. I mean, that's just kind of the, the truth about it. Would have come back to the city and, and, you know, potentially the city would have said, find a new spot. So just, just so you know, that's kind of what happened is the process. Us trying to be good, friendly to the businesses, which I'm hoping the city manager has now a process in place that doesn't allow us to get upside down and backwards like we are now. I hope she's going to nod her head and tell me- It's not finalized, but we're working on a new process. So we won't hopefully have this happen again. But, but that's just the frustration. It's not with the school, I'm sure the school is wonderful, it's just location and traffic for me.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, Mayor. I've spoken to the applicant by telephone. While I don't agree with the location of the school that was obviously prior to me sitting in this chair, I do believe that the condition placed by staff will help us navigate this a little bit. And correct me if I'm wrong, so even if, so they have to come back in a year, no matter what. But if we have any issues between now and that year, we can bring it back and revoke the conditional use for the school.
That is correct. If you think it's overkill to bring them back if there's no issues, then, you know, staff would agree that we could remove that portion. But we, we did write language in there that if there are any issues, that it can return at any time.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure you clarify, it's not just the first year. The way the language that's being presented is-
In perpetuity?
It's as long as the conditional use permit is in place unless the City Council likes to take that provision out of-
I like it like this.
I do too.
This is, this is perfect. So with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Before we do, we'd like to give Mr. Gilbert an opportunity to speak.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, dude. Being a business, building, building, you know, build it and they will come. I think we're a little premature, we'll take responsibility for that. I agree with both, both council people. I went out there and sat for the stacking issues. I met with staff, they told me there are different lots that they can use for stacking and car areas that we can use to take them off the road and put them on the school premises, which I thought was a great idea. I don't think that we need to do that now, but I think that's a great option. I, I do believe the gentleman that spoke, Doctor, that said, you know, you're traveling 27 miles or whatever to the next school. That creates traffic jams and also health and, and safety concerns. And autistic children, I understand that. Believe me, I'm very familiar with autism. So we have to go ahead with this, I believe. But the contingency is, if it is a problem, which I could foresee it because I sat there in the chair, that we need to make sure that school has areas that they can pull into and stack, not in the roads and in the roadways. So my, my thing is that I put some of it on us as a council for allowing it to happen. I agree with councilwoman that it shouldn't have, but now it's built and they will come. And these are children. I'm very familiar with charter schools and, and parochial schools and NHA, very familiar with that. My nephew runs NHA, which has 72 parochial schools in inner cities and cities. I think the staff did a great job of finding solutions and I don't think we should hesitate to let this school open and let these kids get an education in a great environment. But with that being said, I think we should have the contingencies of being able to put them on school grounds if, if traffic becomes an issue. But there's also a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM window. This is not a regular school, this is before-school and after-school programs also. So I guess it's not a question, it's a statement. But I, great ideas, great things will happen, but let's keep it open. If there is a way, let's make sure that we have an area that we can put cars in, in, in that, in, in, on the school property versus on public roadways. Thank you.
Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, thank you, I just would like to say I also did speak to the applicant and I do, I appreciate Deputy Mayor giving us a little bit of the history of this because it was, this all happened before I was here as well and I would just hope in the future that the right steps, the right process will be taken so that the city isn't put in this position in the future. And I agree, it's not right at this point to, to hold up the opening of the school for the children. I just, I hope that, that we wouldn't have to be put in this position again. And I, I do like the, the conditions of revisiting it if, if needed. So I will second Councilmember Fletcher's motion.
You can't do that until I say something first?
Uh-oh.
You're getting ahead of me. I'll tell you when. I'm, I'm a pastor, I'm in favor of Christian education. But I do want to remind this group, we had a long discussion about this very issue and our concern was not having a school, the issue was safety and the stacking problem. And you're going to find that on that highway right now, there is a major problem with traffic. You guys are going to have to work overtime to not create a bigger problem. And I want you to know that this is, this is a conditional approval. And, and the burden is not on us, it's on you. We addressed this from the very beginning, that we felt there would be a traffic problem and you chose to proceed. And this is where we're at today. And we love, I love Christian education. I want you to have this school, but you're going to have to assure us that this is not going to be a traffic problem or this will be brought back in your conditional use will be a problem for you. With that, I will accept the motion from Mr. Fletcher for the adoption of this. Do I have a motion for the record?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second from Councilmember-
Second.
Mr. Urban, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And just to make sure, that would be with the additional conditions that are on the screen?
That is correct.
Yes, and that is with the additional conditions that have been-
In perpetuity, right?
In perpetuity that have been brought to us from the staff. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Is that clear, Mr. Renter?
It is.
Thanks, sir. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations.
Good, good luck, that's awesome.
Brings us to item number eight, Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2022-308R, a resolution of the City-
You need to carry your conversations outside, please.
Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida in support of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Community Development Block Grant and authorizing the mayor to approve the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members. Wendy Colazo, Finance Director, this is Resolution number 2022-308R. This is your 2021 CAPER, also known as the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. There is a long description here of what is a CAPER. So I'm going to summarize it for you so that you, I don't lose you here. So the City of St. Cloud has the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant. This is a program and what we do is we outline what we're going to do with this funding that comes from the federal government through annual action plans, also known, and you'll later see or have seen already, that are called the AAP. This is a summary of anything we're going to do with these activities, actions, and what we're specifically going to do with federal and non-federal resources. And they're identified and in conjunction with the consolidated plan that goes from 2019 through 2013. Excuse me, well, we're going backwards, 2023. Of course, with any money or any funding that we get, the Housing and Urban Development, which is your federal grantor, wants to know what we did with the money, what do we accomplish and what's our progress. And this brings us forward with the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And if you don't mind, I'd like to call it the CAPER from here so we can get it moving. All right, so the CAPER includes a report. This is all the resources and investments that were brought in. It analyzes and reports on the goals and the outcomes. The report is also on any progress towards providing affordable housing. This is to your demographic composition of those individuals and those families assisted. You'll hear things like the LMI, the low moderate income category, and then the participation of our citizens in those efforts. What are our resources? In the CDBG, the resources in prior year were 650,922. Amount expended, 32,938. We had the CDBGCV funds and please bear with me, it's the federal government, so there will be more acronyms than anything in this whole thing, okay? So in 2020, 519,782 were available. Expended in '21 were 127,983. The CDBGCV had three major categories, which were public services, which we used for the Council on Aging, for the Food Bank efforts, and expended $45,000. The CDBGCV Small Business Rental Assistant Grand Program, we expended $80,000. So the CV was funding that we didn't anticipate because we couldn't anticipate COVID. And that's where we got that funding and this is how it was allocated. And finally, of course, in order to administer the program, expended was $2,983 and this was for the management and the hours that go in, in order to get these resources out to our citizens. What are our goals? CD3 Public Services, this is servicing 150 low moderate income. That's what was assisted. The outcomes, we actually hit and assisted 652 low moderate income individuals. In the category of ED-1 employment, 30 jobs created or retained. We are at 11 jobs retained and we continue those efforts as we go through the year. Race and ethnic composition, of course, is a character in this. This is the number of persons served through your CDBG reporting on race and ethnicity. This was through 217 people. Here's the breakdown of your ethnicity. 63%, 416 were assisted in the white category. 60 assisted in the black African-American, or 9%. Four assisted in the Asian, less than 1%. And then four assisted were American Indian or of Alaska Native, less than 1%. 179 assisted were other multiracial, that composed 27. And by ethnicity, 337 assisted were Hispanic and/or 51%. Citizen participation, as we continue on, we did the opportunity participant and how we do that is we do public comment and this is on a 15-day notice. It ran through November 17th through December 8th. And then we had a public hearing today, December 8th, at 6:30 PM to give the results of such. The draft of the CAPER, you can find it in the Community Development Department Office. Listed below is the link that you can find on the website under the Community Development Block Grant. Written comments can be made to the grants administrator, which currently at this time is vacant and you are looking at your grants administrator. So you can email me at wendy.colazo@stcloudflorida.gov and we will help you in the grants division or any comments that anybody has. The submission to the prior year 2021 CAPER is reported to HUD. This is through their system, again, another acronym, IDIS. This is your Integrated Disbursement and Information System. It's a system where we draw down money, report every, all the reports that we need to and this is going to be done if adopted today and approved on December, by December 28th, 2022. The staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2022-308R and are requesting the same from council for approval of 2022-308R. And I can answer any questions you may have on this one.
Thank you very much, I don't know how you keep up with all of those forms and things. Councilmember Fletcher, you had your line, or you want to speak to the side? Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes, I was just at a meeting with Osceola for the, let's call it CDBG grant, is that okay?
Yes.
And it's a treasury thing and it's a grant, a federal government grant. Just like some grants or most grants, you don't use it, you lose it. There's a lot of money that we've been granted and not a lot of money we've been spending. Each year we go get the grant and it's a great grant and it could be used. And I, and again, no disrespect, I think you're awesome in what you do and everything you do. But how do we utilize the full amount of this grant each year to help this city? I'm not asking because I have the answers, I'm asking because I have the questions. We're looking over less than 10 or 20% of the granted monies that we use year in and year out. How do we, you know, buck it up? How do we make more? How do we utilize that grant for the folks that need that grant? Again, I don't have those answers. If I did, we'd be hanging out, we'd be figuring it out, but I'd be more than happy to work with you on it. So my question is, we're granted and 90% of that grant we don't use year in and year out. And I know you're quick and you're speaking, I've taken notes and I can't read my chicken scratch. But, but how do we go to that next level utilizing those grants that the treasury gives us through HUD and through this and, and to do that? And one of the things is, they grant you money, but they never give you administration money. They said, oh, we'll give you 10 bucks, but we won't give you five bucks to run the deal. How do we use that grant money creatively to continue this grant money and to utilize it and maybe expand it versus using less than we're granted? I don't have that answer, I just have the question. And I apologize and I give it back to you.
No, absolutely, it's a fantastic question and, you know, first and foremost, hopefully because I'm doing my job right, we are going to set a cadence and that's what we're doing, right? So one, let me clarify some things so that you have full transparency. The CDBG, the City of St. Cloud is an entitlement city, which means that if HUD stops giving us money, we still got to pay it out. So it's a benefit to the city because we dish out some money, right, to get these programs that are well-deserved. However, we get a reimbursement. To address your second question on administrative and $10 and stuff. So there's a method and madness to federal funding. We don't ever want people to get rich off our grant, right? It has to be commensurate to the project. So if I'm telling you I've spent $38,000, there's no way I should have $60,000 in administrative, right? That's the check and balance and that's the beauty of finances because two plus two, sir, is four in any country and any language. So that's our check and balance. Now, to address the question about how we're going to do it, it's your action plan. We are integrated with Community Development and now EcoDev. We sit down and we talk about action plans and goals. We have a word right now that's low-hanging fruit, right? We're not big dogs in this game, we're getting a program right and with transition and what has happened, we want to be resourceful and most importantly, get this, this funding to those low moderate income. So the way we've done is, we're pumping out money right now that we're going to send out to people like Council on Aging as sub-recipient because they have existing programs that are ready and launched, right? So we're talking about help to the elderly, the food bank and pantry, rehab. And we have some projects that could go into like construction and parts like that, but those take time and have more qualifications. So we feel, you know what, we're going to be really smart about this and infuse money into this community through resources that are already established. So to answer your question, that should catch us up in cadence. And if there's one thing I do love as a finance director is cash flow. So I'm going to make sure, and in the timeframe that we've had this, we are already caught up in 2019 and 2020, federal year, with funding. We were in problems of cadence and we now mitigate it with partnership with Community Development, EcoDev. So now we're singing the same song, we're talking about and we're trying to grab what is feasible. So you will see a lot of money pumped through Council of Aging right now to get this money out to who is entitled to it, which is our citizens. We should not run into that chance of not spending that money. So, you know, we are about 60 days into the new fiscal year. Everybody's kind of getting the cobwebs out a little bit and you'll see more movement this year. My goal is that by end of budget period, we should be caught up all the way up to 2022 year. And also, consider that the reason our cadence kind of changed as well was because we didn't expect over 300,000 in COVID money that we had to pump out as well and the businesses got that. So we still got a lot more spending to do. So you'll see this change, this is just where we were at this point. Give you, give me a quarter and we're going to have this, you know, in, in a much better cadence, so.
Thank you for that answer. And, you know, with federal money and treasury money, they like to take it back. So I like to spend their money. So thank you very much for your answer.
Yes, sir, I can guarantee you they're not going to take nothing from us. So we'll, we'll make sure and get it out to our residents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other discussion from council? Did I ask for public comment? If there's anyone in the public who wants to speak to the side, please do so. If not, could I entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution number 2022?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from, second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Brings us to council action, item number one, Madam Clerk?
Discussion of possible action regarding council serving on committee boards of other entities.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, council, good evening. Every year, the, we revisit this list. This is the boards and committees from other entities that this council serves on. Council can make changes to their appointments at this time and we need to fill the ones that were previously filled by Councilmember Askew and Councilmember Tre- that were previously filled by Councilmember Askew and Councilmember Trace.
Do you want to walk us down the list, or you want me to?
If you want to, we can. Mayor Blackwell, Christmas with the kids?
I'm going to continue to serve on that, but that organization, it appears is in the process of dissolving. They've kind of reached the end of their ability to form, and no one else is willing to step up the plate to take over the leadership, so that will be one committee meeting that I feel like I will not be able to, or I will not have to serve on any longer. Next?
Education Foundation for Osceola County, which was previously held by Councilmember Askew.
Is there anyone here that would like to serve on the Education Foundation?
I wouldn't. Mayor?
Mr. Fletcher? Anyone else? Are there any objections? Okay.
Okay. Florida League of Cities Transportation and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, no appointees to the cycle. It stays here for Cycle Twenty-two and Twenty-three. Applications for new committees is in May of Twenty-two, so I guess we don't have anyone appointed to that.
Is there anyone here on the council that's interested in being considered for that appointment?
Do you know when the meetings are?
I can double-check. It's not on here. I guess they're coming out with a new policy for the Twenty-two, Twenty-three, but I can find out and get back to the council and bring it back.
Okay, I hear no volunteers, but we'll move on.
Are you willing to serve if the schedule permits?
Yeah, I mean, depending on the schedule, yeah.
So why don't you go in that direction, and then you can check the schedule?
So why don't we put down Ms. Matheny?
Sure.
Councilmember Matheny? And you'll get back with her with application issues, right?
Absolutely. And then the Florida League of Mayors is held by Mayor Blackwell.
I'll also be stepping down from that. I'm serving on the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors, and I can't do both. I'll get back with you on that.
Okay.
Okay? But I'm still on it for right now.
Okay. Now of Osceola, which was formerly held by Councilmember Askew.
Does anyone here interested in serving on that? Do you know what it does?
Did we confirm that his seat expires? He told me many times that he was appointed separately, not as a city council member.
I heard the same thing.
I can confirm that and get back to the staff.
Okay. Then let's confirm that, and then we'll move on.
Municipal Advisory Committee for Metro Plan Orlando.
I've served on that previously. I'd be willing to serve on that again.
Okay, perfect. Then Osceola Chambers, which is currently held by Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Are you going to continue to serve?
I haven't gone yet, because we just, I just got put on here.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Osceola Council on Aging, which is held by Councilmember Urban.
I am currently serving there, and I'm happy to continue serving on the Council on Aging Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the O U C Joint Contract Administration Committee, which is held by the mayor.
I will continue to serve there.
Policymakers Liaison Committee for the Florida Municipal Power, which was formerly held by Councilmember Trace.
Do we have any volunteers? We'll bring that back again, then.
Then the St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce, which was formerly held by Councilmember Askew.
I can serve if you would so desire.
Mr. Gilbert? Volunteers? I hear no other offers, so, Mr. Gilbert, you're our candidate for that.
St. Cloud Main Street, which is currently held by Councilmember Urban.
I would be happy to continue to serve there.
All right.
The T D C, the Tourist Development Council of Osceola County, which is currently held by Mayor Blackwell.
No, it's held by Councilmember Matheny. She's...
I'm actually on the T D C board right now.
Yeah, it's not me.
Is that you?
Oh, you are.
I thought Matheny was that. Are you going to continue with that? You're on several boards, you want to share that?
If you would like it, you can, but I'm happy to continue.
No, I'm not saying that I like it.
The mayor, I think he's got, like, six different...
Colby, if you ever want to give it up, I've worked in the tourism industry for thirty-six years, so if you want to give it, I will take it. If not, continue on.
Sure. If you would like to, I think you would bring a new perspective to that, so I'd be happy to give that up, too, if you'd like.
Are you okay with that? Because that's just in my bailiwick.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir.
All right. Mr. Gilbert will be our new T D C. I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Matheny had taken it.
We went through the gamut. I think we got everyone.
I was for a moment.
And then we have the Tri-County League of Cities, which is held by Mayor Blackwell.
I am the, I will be the new president.
Congratulations, by the way.
Yeah, that's exciting, another meeting.
You're the president.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And then we have the Water Co-op, which is currently held by Deputy Mayor Matheny.
I'm happy to keep it unless somebody wants it. Sounds like it's me.
So what do we have still blank open?
Help Now.
Yes.
I would like to say, since Councilmember Gilbert took over my position on the T D C Committee, I'd be happy to take over former Councilmember Trace's position on the Policymakers Municipal Power Agency.
Yeah, that might be a neat one.
Okay. Mr. Urban?
Perfect. I'll make a note of that.
So we have a...
The only one other one that we have is the Policymakers Liaison Committee. That's the only one that we don't have anyone else on.
Okay.
Isn't that the one you just said you'd take?
No, Help Now is the one that he just took.
No.
No, no, no. He said he would take the Policymakers. That's Urban.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the one Mr. Urban said he would take.
My apologies.
If Help Now comes back, I would like to serve on that if it comes back to us.
Hey, you guys didn't tell me that this Chamber of Commerce at seven-thirty A M. What's going on?
Page to read the small print. Sorry, it's a done deal now.
Did somebody take the MAC, the Municipal Advisory Committee for Metro Plan?
I am.
Okay.
I have MAC. That's usually a mayor position, anyway. Okay. Item number two. Madam Clerk?
Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Selection of a Deputy Mayor.
Well, we certainly appreciate the great job Deputy Mayor Matheny has done. I'd like to see Councilmember Urban be given that opportunity.
I agree.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Urban to be our Deputy Mayor.
I'll second it. That was going to be my motion.
Fantastic.
You're sitting there with a surprised look on your face.
I would be honored. I certainly appreciate the job that Deputy Mayor Matheny has done as our Deputy Mayor, and I'd be honored to continue that.
Well, if you get elected, you've got some big high-heeled shoes to fill. Do we have any other nominations? Do we need to vote on that? Can we just have a...
Yeah, she needs a vote.
Does it need to be a verbal roll call?
No, it has to be a roll call vote.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We have a motion from the mayor. You have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
How'd you get in this? Aye.
And Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Menzeris, what do you have for us?
I don't have anything other than wish everybody Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Isn't that crazy? Eighteen days away, or fifteen, so it's crazy.
I got to go Christmas shopping. Get me out of here.
City Manager Miller, you're still here.
I am. I have a few items. First, unfortunately, the city was not awarded the Safe Grant for Additional Fire Personnel. We received that notice earlier today. Second, Representative Hawkins' Assistant Rocky Haig helped coordinate a meeting between me and D E O Deputy Chief of Staff Schrader to discuss downtown business assistance. He also then further set up, I was able to meet with the D E O Director of Small and Minority Business Capital, as well as the Deputy Director of Legislative and Cabinet Affairs. Unfortunately, there are no additional grants, but they did share information regarding some of the loan programs, so I'm going to work with our Economic Development Department just to continue to share that information with our downtown businesses. Third, earlier this week, State Director of Resiliency, Dr. Brooks, visited St. Cloud with South Florida Water Management District, St. John's Water Management District, Osceola County. Our deputy mayor attended and actually made sure that the City of St. Cloud was present, so we're very appreciative of that. And others to review the recent East Lake elevated waters issues. They're working on solutions to help improve the C thirty-one canal gates to facilitate water movement, and I was able to mention the legislative request that we have regarding some tools to help us with that, and he's helping also to coordinate that possibly the Office of Emergency Management give us that before the legislative appropriation season even happens. And earlier today, South Florida Water Management District sent him an email and copied me, reminding him that he was going to try to help us with that. And last, congratulations to our Police Chief Gurkey, who graduated in class number fifty-five from the Florida Criminal Justice Institute Chief Executive Seminar. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
You always got a one-up. I don't know.
You have anything else?
Listen, got called an attorney today.
Did she go home and cry? Did she go home and cry?
All right, let's get it under control. I always wanted to do that. Councilmember Matheny?
Well, congratulations, Mr. Urban. I was going to make the motion, too, so I want to say Happy Holidays, and also that meeting that the City Manager is talking about, there's some pretty exciting stuff happening with, when Hurricane Ian happened, I mean, I saw unprecedented cooperation between, like, the City of St. Cloud, Osceola County, Orange County, the airport, the Water Management District, the Army Corps. I mean, I've been there fifteen years, I've never seen such cooperation, and so then to have this after-action meeting where all these, you know, the brains of water management, you know, came to us, I mean, it's pretty impressive. And then when they kind of saw, like, what we were dealing with, the aftermath, they saw the photos, they talked about things, to see the canal, and the canal's in pretty rough shape now from having all that water in it, and just, I don't know, I just feel like there's a lot of buy-off that's happening with the surrounding agencies, so that's really good news. I also heard the county manager say in that meeting that one of their legislative priorities that they were going to push forward was asking for the Water Management Districts to take over managing water when there's a state of emergency, which, and I talked to the City Manager about as well, and I said, that's pretty amazing, because then you're not going to have everybody just trying to take care of themselves and dump the water, you know? You have somebody at the, you know, fifteen-thousand-foot level kind of managing things. So I thought that was wonderful. I hadn't heard that until, like, Monday of this week. So, yeah, there's some pretty cool stuff happening. The best news is that Lake Shore is opening tomorrow. Maybe my drive to work won't be so horrible, but Happy Holidays, everybody.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes, well, thank you again. It's an honor to serve as Deputy Mayor, so thank you for the City Council for nominating me for that. Just want to, as we approach the holiday season and a new year, I just want to send a special thank you to all of our staff who worked so hard all year, and they truly, truly make our job a lot easier to do by working so hard, so just want to thank staff and wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilmember Gilbert?
I've got two more things to do. I've got St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce, and I've got Tourist Development...
You've already agreed to that. You can't take it back.
I just, oh, sorry. No, again, I always thank the staff and congratulations, Police Chief, you guys, you rock the world. And Fire Chief over there, you're cool, too. I appreciate that, and everybody here. I celebrated my twentieth-year anniversary yesterday, and they didn't say I'd make my second wedding for two years, so I'm eighteen years plus, so guys, pat me on the back for that, because who would want to be married to me? But anyway, thank you all very much for allowing me to be part of this council. I hope I add something to it, and God bless you all. You know, this is a season where family, friends, in Christ. So God bless everybody here, and God bless America.
Councilmember Fletcher?
I just had a quick question for the City Manager. The downtown construction project's still on schedule. Everything's still moving smoothly for them down there?
So they sent me a request earlier today asking to, again, start closing Tenth Street. They told me that all the businesses on Tenth Street were good with it, and I said, well, what about the businesses one block south? Because they are talking, if you give me one second, I can pull up the schedule that they said, but it sounds like, yes, we are on schedule. And, one, one second. I asked them to have our P I O start working on some of this. So they are requesting to close down Tenth Street this Sunday evening, December eleventh, from Florida Avenue, including the intersection west to New York Avenue. The intersection would remain open. Their plan is to concentrate on the intersections of Tenth and Florida and Tenth and Pennsylvania first. Once the intersections are open, they would move west along Tenth Street, starting at Florida and opening blocks one at a time. Cathcart says they're at the point where they need Tenth Street closed to continue their construction pace, and without the shutdown, they would have too many crews working on top of each other, and work would become less efficient. They stated that, let me see, tomorrow Cathcart will have Pennsylvania from Eleventh to Twelfth open, including both intersections, which will allow for more east-west travel downtown, and they anticipate opening the Tenth to Eleventh block of Pennsylvania in the middle of next week. The Ninth to Tenth Street block would not be open until after the New Year. So that's the update that I have.
Thank you so much. And with that, I was going to say, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody, and, you know, if you could, you know, do your Christmas shopping in, what, downtown? There's a lot of good stuff down there, so if we could show them some loving during the holiday season, that would be great. And then my final thing is, I, an elderly resident reached out to me regarding some shrubbery and stuff down at the area of Crawford and Seventeenth Street, and staff resolved it within, I think, twenty-four hours, so I really appreciate it.
I had that same inquiry. That was awesome.
I had the privilege of going with our City Manager to the Osceola County Delegation meeting and was able to share our legislative priorities, that we would certainly love to have assistance from the state, and you guys have a copy of a brochure, very professional, excellent work that the staff did on putting this together. One of the best that I've seen, and really made my job a lot easier. Thank you so much for all that you've done to help get that across. I received a letter I'd like to share with you. She says, "Your kindness makes such a difference in my life. Thank you all." She says, "Mayor Blackwell, I thank you and all who helped make up the certificate of greetings for my one-hundredth birthday. Thank you all again. Some of my relatives from New Jersey, who arrived just minutes after you did, could not believe that the mayor came in person to wish me a happy birthday, and even had his picture taken with me." She was a sharp, I'm a hundred years old, and I hope I'm that sharp, but I get to be eighty, if I make it eighty. The picture was great. Thank you again. Frances Petracino, and I just want to say Happy Birthday to her once again. Delightful, delightful lady. The Christmas Tree program was incredible. You guys, the staff, just did an amazing job shifting. The program was excellent. Everyone did such a wonderful job putting that together. The parade, of course, was just the best, I think, we've had. Again, I had the same note. Christmas is coming up. I'd like to wish all of you a blessed Merry Christmas, and do some shopping downtown. It'll certainly help, especially those that have struggled with keeping their head above water with all of the changes that we've had with going on downtown. With that, brings us to our Information Section and Report Section. Friday, December twenty-third, City Office...